Call the meeting order, please. Call a roll.
Mr. Brulee?
Here.
Ms. Escalante?
Here.
Dr. McFadden?
Here.
Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Mr. Voorhees?
Here.
Indicate that Trustee Monk and Secretary Walker are not here as of yet. Next on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with infinite justice and all.
Next on the agenda, Citizens' Comments. This is a portion of the meetings where you, the citizens, can address the board with any of your comments, questions, or concerns. Be mindful that you have three minutes to which to make your statements or inquiries. Also, be mindful, you may not receive a response from your inquirers this evening. And last but not least, I ask that you address all your comments, statements, or inquiries to the Chair. The agenda is now open for Citizens' Comments.
My name is Mary Campbell. I'm the Mount Clemens Teacher Association President, and I would like to address the intent of the school board to lay off teaching staff for the 2018-2019 school year. On Tuesday, Mrs. Davis shared the layoff list with me and said she would be willing to meet with me to go over the list and address my concerns with it. I am pleased that Mrs. Davis will meet with me because I have a number of concerns. Many of the concerns are ones that I have shared with her throughout the school year. Some of the decisions in regards to who will be laid off are, in my opinion, clearly -- I'm sorry, in my opinion are clearly against Board Policy 3131, a current letter of understanding regarding the GSRP positions and state laws. There are staff members who are concerned about these safety net layoffs, and I need to be able to reassure them that these decisions are justifiable based on board policy, our current letter of understanding, and state laws. Our district cannot afford the lawsuits which will develop from the current list as presented to me. Although I don't support the decision to lay off any EA members, if the decision stands, I will look forward to finding a solution that is fair to our students and teaching staff.
Thank you for your comments. The agenda is still open for Citizens' Comments. Let's see if anybody else wants to address first. Agenda is still open for Citizens' Comments.
I also wanted to take this opportunity to thank Josie for her dedication to our district and wish her well in her new position. She will be missed by many of us, and I will, myself, miss her the most, so good luck.
Thank you for your comments. Next on the agenda, Consent Agenda. Under the Consent Agenda this evening, Item A, Approval of the Minutes for the June 18th, 2018 Public Hearing, the Regular Meeting, and the July 9th, 2018 Board Workshop. Also under the Consent Agenda, Item B, Approval of Bills for Payment. Those are the items under the Consent Agenda.
Mr. President, I'll move that we approve the minutes of the June 18th Meeting -- I'm sorry, the June 18th Public Hearing, the June 18th Regular Meeting, and the July 9th Board Workshop.
Moved by Mr. Voorhees to approve the minutes of the June 18th, 2018 Public Hearing, the minutes of the June 18th, 2018 Regular Meeting, and the July 9th, 2018 Board Workshop. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Monk. Discussion on the motion on the floor. Hearing and seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Brulee?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. McFadden?
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next, the approval of the bills for payment. Chair would entertain a motion. I'm sorry, Mr. Brulee.
Yeah, I would move.
Moved by Mr. Brulee to approve the bills for payment.
Support.
Second by Ms. Escalante. Any questions, discussion on the motion on the floor? Mr. Brulee?
Yeah, we -- the committee met yesterday, and we went over all the bills, one by one. We found everything to be in order, and so that's why we're moving the approval of the bills.
Thank you, Mr. Brulee. Any further questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Brulee?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item Six, this is an action item. It's the policies for second reading. Mr. Monk, you don't want to share anything with the board regarding the second reading of the policies?
Thank you, Mr. President. We met on Monday, our adjustment meeting because of superintendent time schedule. Once again, we had policies that came up for review and for re-adoption for federal, state, and local laws. Just to point out, one of the other ones, and as we stated about four meetings ago, that we will start reviewing all of the policies. One of the ones that we found was our official address has changed from the house to the building. Building means our central campus, so we changed the address on that. We also were submitting for second -- for adoption, the adjustments that we had to make to the evaluation of the superintendent based on the new state superintendent evaluation. And we also -- just kind of reading through my notes, I apologize here. I do apologize for being late also. Attendance policy, you know, this board has made it well-known that we have concerns about the attendance in the district. So, we relooked at the attendance along with when we met on Monday. The superintendent presented to the committee a draft of the -- how can I say it?
Admin guidelines?
Admin guidelines that will be put in place to enact an intervention before it gets to the point where it's that students will have bad attendance. We -- I mean, this board definitely recognizes that if your students are not here, if the kids are not in the classrooms, how can they be taught? And we are in the teaching business. So, we were very pleased with the draft that the superintendent laid out for us. I don't know if she's going to do a presentation tonight on that or not. No? Okay, all right. But we definitely was pleased with the start, and we reiterate that this policy will begin with our 2018-19 school year in its most importance. Other than that, those policies are in the -- in your board packet. I will entertain any questions or anything if any of my members have them at this time.
Okay, we have, let's see, one, two, three, four. Looks like four for second reading and approval.
Yes, sir.
If I'm reading correctly. What's the will of the board? Do you want to do them individually, or collectively, or it's up to the will of the board?
Is all these policies required by law?
Some of them are, yes.
I mean, for this first group?
Oh, the first group, yes. I mean, definitely, you know, we need to have our correct address, and all these are policies that, yes, some are required by law, but some are policies that we, as a board, relooked, retweaked, and going forward for the upcoming school year. Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. President, I move that policy for second reading, policy 0110. I move that be approved.
Moved by Dr. McFadden, policy 0110, official description, address revised, be adopted. Is there support?
Support.
Second by Mr. Monk. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call a roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Brulee?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries.
Mr. President, I move that policy 1240, evaluation to the superintendent, which is revised, be adopted.
Moved by Dr. McFadden, that policy 1240, the evaluation of the superintendent revised, be adopted.
Mr. President, I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Voorhees. Any questions, discussions? Mr. Brulee?
Yeah, I'm in support of this, but what I think we also need to have, and we need to have it by August, is a calendar with all of these dates, along with the other dates we've been talking about regarding administrative evaluation and teacher evaluation and other pertinent things, be put together from August to August so that we go into this knowing what August should have in the agenda, September should have, November, and we don't get caught, and then we can add to that, as we know, further dates. But we should at least start with the dates that we do know about in the evaluatory area so that we're not behind in that sense. I would also like to include budgetary goals. When we talk about those, when is our budget to be adopted? It's usually June, and we have the three times a year we do the budget adjustments and that, but having that known ahead of time, I think, is helpful.
So, Mr. Brulee, are you saying you want that added to the --
No, I just want to say it publicly. I think the superintendent's in accord with this, but I think we should try to have this by August, before the beginning of the school year, because then things start to happen and other priorities come up. So, I'm supporting your motion.
And we did talk about it at the meeting, so we're going to be putting together a calendar for the board.
Any additional questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call a roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brulee?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. That's second reading is adoption. Policy C 5136, personnel communication devices revised. Chair would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Moved by Mr. Monk?
Support.
To approve the policy 5136, second by Ms. Escalante. Are there any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Mr. Monk?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just give just a tad bit, a little bit background on this. This is a personal communication device that we felt that we need to revisit and tweak along with, you know, we, as a district, are really going to start, you know, not that we haven't, but we're really going to make sure that nothing gets in the way of a child's education. And we feel that personal communication device being handled in the hallway in between classes is a distraction to the environment of the school. The policy says that they can have it out at lunch. The policy said that they can use it inside of a classroom when it pertains to a subject, and hey, they have permission by a teacher, but, you know, kids walking down a hallway with headphones in their head, with a cellphone, listening to music, you don't know. Fire breaks out, they can't hear nothing because they just hit Drake in their ears. So, we just tweaked that where it's that they cannot have those communication devices out in between classes.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor?
I'm just trying to see what's the penalty. Do we have a penalty in here or anything, or that's something that's going to be at the building level?
That'd be at, yeah, building level.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Brulee?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Policy D 5200, attendance revised.
So, move.
Moved by Dr. McFadden.
Support.
Second by Mr. Monk. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Mr. Brulee?
Yeah, I just want to thank the superintendent for making sure that we had a subcommittee of administrators to talk about this and to begin that process. When we met for the curriculum committee, we had a real good discussion, I think. We made some suggestions in terms of how we saw it and went back and forth, and I think it was really positive. My understanding is there's going to be a meeting on the 24th where those other revisions and suggestions of people are going to be taken into consideration, and then after that fact, it might be good for us to have a workshop related to that before we would do official approval. I think that the guidelines are helpful to the policy. The policy could be construed as more official sort of penalty, but I think we're looking at this as not that way. We want to make sure that there is help given where help is needed. We don't want a situation to occur where a student is not coming to school because they have a health problem that's chronic and we need to fix that, that they have parental hazard situation where people have working hours that aren't conducive, we need to fix that. So, we want to take out of a punitive nature anything that involves things that we should work with the family to fix. But, there may be cases in which we're ignored, and no matter whatever help we try to offer is not accepted, and then in that case, we need to have this kind of a policy to back us up. So, I think we're trying to make a good headway, and the reason I'm talking a lot about this is because I think people in the school community should know that the board is really focused on this, and it isn't just a regular endeavor of some kind, but that we want the principals and the administrative team and the others, and this isn't just something that the superintendent is saying, oh, here, do more work. This is something that we also want to pursue, so thank you.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call a roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brulee?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Moving the agenda, item -- informational items, Item Seven, 18 mail renewal. Any information for that?
One, I just want to let the board know that we have filed with the Clerk's Office for our 18 mail renewal for the November election. We got confirmation that they do have our application, and that will be on the ballot for November.
Any questions? Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Any questions on Item Eight, the Budget Personnel Report?
And what we were looking at, that's just a reminder of the budget that was approved at our last meeting in June, and in that, we did indicate that there would be some layoffs, what we call safety layoffs, going -- that would be handed out this summer. And we did do this a couple -- now, it's been about three years ago, where we were somewhat in the same situation that, depending on our enrollment, we wanted to make some adjustments. So, in order to make sure that we meet our guidelines, those notices will be going out on Friday, and I will be contacting those employees personally and letting them know what the situation is. But they do not take effect until the Friday af -- if it is even necessary. They would not take effect until the Friday after Council Day in September. So, we were very blessed the last time we had to send these out. We were able to call all of our staff members back. So, we're hoping that we're not even lose any kids, but we'll gain some. We've had some really good conversation with parents that are moving into the district and some that are using schools of choice in September. So, you know, we're very hopeful that will be a repeat of 2015.
Ms. Davis, I just have one comment.
Yes, sir.
And that will be that when you prepare that list and it's presented to us, that it be some to either numbers, or however you want to do that, but that names are not on that list.
Right. And, yeah, because what we ended up doing, because we did talk about the numbers, but I will get that again to you guys and just send it out, so you can see the numbers.
I mean, that's so you can identify them, but I just don't want names on there.
Absolutely.
Mr. Monk?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I don't like layoffs. I hate them. I mean, we've asked a lot of our teachers, you know, pay cut after pay cut after pay cut after pay cut. I understand we have to have students in the seats. I get that. You know, I've been asking for this, you know, what these layoffs, Ms. Davis, what does that look like for us as a district? Have you had any time to put the flow chart that we've been asking for so we can see, you know, you got X amount of teachers out of this school, X amount of teachers out of this school, it's going to affect -- those things, we can know now it's going to affect this class makeup, but, you know, it's -- I don't want to lay nobody off. I will go on the record right now.
Agreed. None of us did.
You know, but, you know.
And the flow chart that you're speaking, I do have one for the staff or admin, but the one that you are specifically talking about, we really won't know that until we see the students, to see where we --
Yeah, but you know, you're already -- well, you're sending off layoffs right now, right?
Yes.
So, we can't get a chart as far as how many out of each building? We can't get that information?
Oh, yes, and we did.
I think we asked for that at the last meeting.
Remember, we talked about this at our workshop, and I did give that to you, but I will look really quickly and tell you again what that was. Yes. Give me a second.
I know you had read off some numbers.
Right, and it was by building?
Right.
And I told you the amount that was coming from each building? And, let's see. Okay. Yes, for the front office, I said that was $127,000. We're also looking at supplies and miscellaneous items. That would be $150,000, so --
That's in the email?
No, we talked.
Can you send it out to the board in the email?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you're market, you know?
Yeah, I agree.
Market, yeah.
Okay. And then for Seminole, it said there were seven. We're looking at, which is $650,000. For middle school, two, $180,000. King, one, at $90,000. The high school, three, at $270,000. And ancillary staff was $180,000, and that subtotal was $1,370,000, for a grand total of $1,647, even. And the reason for that is, you know, making sure that we covered all of the bases and took care of what we needed to. So, but yes, I will definitely send those numbers to you in an email.
Thank you.
You said the Council Day is September this year?
Yes.
Okay. I thought it was in October.
I thought it was October, yeah.
Generally, it's --
Oh, it's the first, it's the first one?
First Friday, first Wednesday.
Yeah, it's first Wednesday in October. I'm sorry.
Mr. Brulee?
Yeah, just process-wise for this, my understanding is that the superintendent has been in touch with the president and association, that there's still some negotiation to go on as to even who should be notified, that we won't know what area, if any, until we know the number of students, but that we have to, by law, send this out now in order to be in compliance with the contract. So, that's my understanding of the situation, and that if we don't have a decrease in students, then we're okay, but last year, we did have a decrease, and we kept the budget we had, kept the number of faculty that we had, even though we did have a decrease. So, we tried, when we could, to avoid it. This year, the budget is closer, and if we don't, we will have a deficit. Whereas this year, we're pretty waiting the audit, but pretty confident that there won't be a deficit, and that we will, in fact, be able to chunk at our operating deficit, so that will help us prevent these layoffs. But, we need to be prepared in case. As to whom and what, I leave that all to you guys to figure out and follow the rules as they should be followed.
Yeah, the only thing, I'll just ask for numbers per bill. I don't want to ask for details. I'll just ask.
No, no, I know. I was just saying the other part out loud, because I don't think it had been voiced.
Mr. President, you know, I'll bring it up right now. I think, you know, I've grown frustrated on this board because I don't like having these conversations at a board meeting. I think these conversations can be had when the policies report out, because I don't sit on the Personnel Committee policy, you know, I only sit on the Policy Committee. But I would like to know all that information, as do my fellow board members do in those committees. I would like to know that information also before I get to a board meeting.
Absolutely.
You know what I'm saying? I think that's just only fair.
And that's why we have it.
Now, we can go to, you know, maybe having a meeting of the whole.
Well, we did talk about this at the meeting at the whole, so it's not anything that's new to the whole board, because we did discuss this at the last meeting.
Right.
So, it was discussed, and it wasn't done in a vacuum and just done with the Personnel Committee. It was discussed at the workshop that we had, but if there's more information that you would like, you know, that's no problem, because there's no decisions made, you know, everybody heard the same thing. And going with these layoffs, you have to throw a bigger net out there than you really want to.
I understand.
Because like Mr. Brulee said, last year, we kept, we stepped with the budget, and, you know, we kept the same number of faculty. Well, hopefully, we can do that again this year, but by the language in the contract, we have to notify people by a certain date.
Correct.
In order to do so. So, this is just an in case, and that's why we throw out the big net, because there's been years, I've served on this board 20, 25 years ago, where we'd come in and lay everybody in the district off, with the exception of the superintendent, and the next meeting, we'd be, we'd start bringing people back, because by law, we had to notify people by X date certain in order to do so. That way, you don't carry all the expenses if you don't do it correctly. So, that's why the net is being thrown out there so big, and hopefully, that the net shrinks or the net goes away. And that depends on the number of students that are in, that comes through our doors.
Right. Understood.
Nobody on this board wants to do this. Nobody on this board wants to do this.
Right, I understand everything you said, and yes, I understand by contract, you know, my thing is that I just would like, yeah, we had that, we had that meeting or the workshop, that's one time that we talked about it, but there's, you know, the committee meets every month. So, I mean, the superintendent's shaking his head. It's just, I like information. I mean, I'm sorry, but that's just how I am.
But, Mr. Monk, I have to.
I'm not saying that nothing is done, trying to be done behind closed doors, or anybody's telling lies, anything like that. I just want to know, that's all. I just want to know, that's all. And I think as a board member, it's my right to know.
And you should.
Right.
But, Mr. Monk, I have been talking about this. Told you exactly how much money that we would have to reduce the budget by since March, and we went over-
I'm not disputing that, Ms. Davis. I'm not disputing that.
But you said, but you said, yes, but you did say that you didn't know because other people knew and because you don't sit down on these committees. But I don't want the public to think that this was done in a vacuum.
That's what I'm saying. I know. Listen, I don't want the public to think that either.
We've been talking about this. We've been talking about it since March, and I went over each of these numbers at our last workshop. I told you how much, and that was the first time. But I just don't want the public to think that this is the very first time that you've heard this or the board members, because I did go over these numbers, and you guys asked numerous questions at that workshop. And we talked about that.
And I asked you for- we've been asking for a flow chart. We've been asking for a flow chart. We've been asking for- what do the district look like? We know that I- I get it. The meats- the meat and potatoes as far as what needs to be in what class, what a classroom going to look like, I'm just- I just need to know. Those are my comments.
I'll get your flow chart.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns on item eight, budget personnel report? Item nine, June cash flow report, any questions? Item 10, open purchase order listings, any questions? Item 11, contract listings, any questions? Item 12, Mr. Monk, we're going to throw it back over into your court. It's all dealing with policies for first reading. Look.
Yeah, pulling up the news.
My aggressiveness look like, oh, oh.
Yeah. We got a new agenda just yesterday, so I'm having to empty out.
You can have these.
Let me just a second, Mr. President. Well, I got my sheet right here.
Okay.
Policy zero one hundred?
Yeah, policy zero one hundred. And these are all, these policies, to the question that Dr. Metfan has, these are definitely federal and state guideline policies that need to be adjusted. We went through these. Most of them is, and I'm asking my community to help me, most of them were just wording. They took out wording. I think one of them was on a personal unit device. It was, so most of it is just wording. You know, we was looking at it like it's a lot of lawyer talk, basically. So most of these new- these policies, actually, all these policies up for first reading are for state and federal guidelines to- to the policies that need to be adjusted.
Okay, we have for the first reading, policy zero one hundred, definitions revised. Background, history, the policy revised to update- to be updated to include social media terminology. Policy seventy-five thirty, lending of board-owned equipment revised. Background, history, this policy is revised to change the description from district-owned to board-owned equipment. Policy seventy-five forty, technology revised. Background, history, policy seventy-five forty is revised to update- to be updated for a comprehensive definition of social media. Policy seventy-five forty point zero two, web accessibility, content, apps, and services revised. Background information, policy seventy-five forty dot zero two is revised to update one-way communications and ADA compliance. Policy seventy-five forty point zero four, staff, technology, acceptable use, and safety revised. Background is policy is revised to incorporate the new social media policy. Policy seventy-five forty-four, use of social media, this is a new policy. Background information, policy seventy-five forty-four is a new policy to address social media communications. Those are the policies that are being presented tonight for the first reading. If there's any questions or comments or additions that might be able to make, because since it seems like this is a state law, basically, and it's state law, you got to do it. And so there's no adjustments, modifications, or change. You got to do it that way. If there's any questions, comments, or concerns, you can get those to the members of the policy committee to be vetted out prior to these policies coming back to the board for the second reading and adoption. Any questions? All right. Item thirteen, superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank our summer school staff and the parents sending their kids to summer school. It's been well attended, and even the extended day program, the students are coming and we're adding to that number each day. So it's very well attended, and the- and the kids seem to be having lots of fun. So we want to thank the staff, families, and communities for supporting that program. Our audit will be underway starting August the sixth through the seventeenth, and we're working with our new firm, Raymond, on that. Let's see. And one is the blueprint update. More information will be coming about that. We will have representative from MyExcel at the next board meeting to go over, because there is a workshop for board members to get a better, clearer understanding of what blueprint is all about. And so I did include them outer ring on- with your packet just to give you an overview of some of the pieces that we've been putting in place. And it is a building format, so we will be- you will be getting more information on that. So if board members are available to attend, we'll have those dates ready for you on that one. Clem Care will also be doing an update at the next board meeting. Jill Yor came last meeting to tell us a little bit more about diabetes in our younger students, and that's an issue, so she's trying to get funding for that. But she's also working on another grant, a much bigger one, that will include our K through 12 students, so that they will be able to assist students throughout the district. Right now, they have- their grant was for 11 years, all up to, I believe it was 21, something like that. But it was mostly middle schoolers. So she knows that there's a much higher need with our younger students. So she is working on a grant, and she's hoping to have some good information for us at the next meeting. Also, I want to thank Josie for filling in tonight for Joy Metz. She's on vacation, so Josie, and tomorrow also, as Mary Campbell said, tomorrow is her last day. Josie has been in this district for over 10 years. She has definitely been a pillar for the department and for all of the staff and community members. So everybody knows Josie. I, for one, will miss her immensely. And I was trying to get her to stay, but I couldn't fight against or compete with her being only 10 minutes from her home and with her young son. So Josie, I do wish you the best. I truly will miss you, missing you already. But I know you're going to do well in your district, and I thank you for the hard service that you have given us over the years, and especially to the department. Well wishes will be coming probably for the entire year. But thank you. Thank you so much for your service. And the last one, Terry McCoy also informed us that she will be leaving her last day, I believe it's August the 19th. And when Terry first got here, she had mentioned that her life dream was to start on her own service agency. And she has an opportunity to do that, and that's what she- why she is leaving us. Terry came in to do what we thought would be a one-year job, and she was phenomenal with our students and with our families. And I believe she could probably tell you at least 80% of all of the families in this district, tell you something about those families and the students and who's connected to who. It's just amazing how she remembers all of the families. So we definitely will be missing her. So when we have our next board meeting, I believe that will be her last day. She'll have a couple of days after that. But I want to wish Terry well, and again, she's another one that we will sorely miss because she has definitely made an impact on our district and especially with our students. So we wish Terry the best too, but, you know, you can't compete against a lifelong dream. And she has an opportunity to start her own practice, so congratulations to her. But she's- say that she still wants to work with our district. She is looking into grants now that hopefully she'll be able to get approved and come back next summer and work with our students, because she sees the need here. And she has developed a love for our students and continues to want to help, even though her practice will be in Ohio. But she will be coming back, so we won't see the last of her.
Good. Thank you.
Those are my comments.
Any questions on the superintendent? Mr. Broo.
Just a comment that I want to get in the minutes so that we don't forget about it. And that is for the budget for next year. I was a little bit dismayed to understand that the kids who come to summer school have to pay at the high school because they're on a program that requires us to pay them, not because we want to charge them. I guess it's the younger kids are 10 bucks, middle school's 20, and these other students, the older kids have to pay 75. Sometimes that's an impediment. I would like to have in the budget for next year considered that there not be a charge for that, understanding our financial situation at the time. But that at a minimum, anyone who successfully completes at the high school level gets their money back. So that there's also a financial incentive besides an educational incentive to accomplish what people need to accomplish. I'm a little concerned that our program is not so much teacher-centered. I understand that would be much more expensive, but it's more computer-centered. And that, I think, is difficult for those students because they haven't successfully done that once. I'm not sure they're going to successfully do it twice, you know, unsuccessfully. So I would also like to look at something that's a little bit more teacher-centered. I know it's a lot more expensive. But if we start now and look towards next summer, maybe we can figure out some other ways to get it. Because I think if a student's willing to come back in the summer, we should almost get it more into a mentoring situation rather than a classroom situation so that these kids feel some success. I think if they're willing to give that up, we should pay attention to those kids who are willing to and try to- to figure this out, take obstacles away from them, not put it in front of them. So I know we couldn't do that this year, it's fine. But I think next year, we can maybe, as we financially get better, this would be an area I think we could look at to really help us in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Broo. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Superintendent or comments? Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Item fourteen, committee reports. Business report. Anybody on the business committee? Ms. Walker, Ms. Walker is not here.
Well, Christine and I were there, and we've completed our committee report in the body of the meeting.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the policy committee?
Just a couple. We also looked at, how you pronounce that word? Headlights, what is it?
I don't- you're putting me on the spot.
Yeah, I'm going to put my board member on the spot.
Where is it?
I usually be pronouncing it.
Pediculosis.
Oh, okay.
Headlights.
Headlights. We- we looked at that and talked about that as far as superintendent and her team is going to come up with a program pertaining to that with the start of the new school year. And also, she provided to us a administrative referral form that the district will be using on every student going forward as far as, and it kind of covers everything as far as discipline, attendance, and, you know, this, you know, this form with whatever student, every student will have a hard copy, and also all the information is put on- on the system. So that way, if the system crashes, then we got a hard copy to back up whatever information. And going forward, we had- we had brought this up back when the school shooting happened down in Florida, and that kind of prompted, me just reading the background prompted, make sure that we have all the documentations that we need. So if in case something happened, you know, then we can, you know, provide whatever documentation that we need to provide to law enforcement in whatever situation happens with the district. Other than that, everything else I had already talked about in the beginning of under the adoption policy. You know, entertaining, any questions?
Any questions on the chair? Thank you, Mr. Monk.
You are.
Curriculum personnel.
Yes, Mr. President, how you doing? Myself, Mr. Brooley, and Madam Superintendent, yesterday, also Ms. Jensen. And what I went over with the superintendent, because I know a lot of our board members request information. Our last meeting here as a group was about a week and a half, maybe. So I told her after every meeting, put it all in the packet, my agenda, my notes, lined out to everybody. So we got everything in here, so if they have any questions, they can look at it. Give me a call, let me know what's going on. But I'll go over what we went over yesterday, because the meeting was yesterday, so a lot of people did not be able to see this information. We did get some good information, some positive outcomes. If you look in your packet, the last few pages, which is in the back, you might see it on your printout or on your computer screen, whatever.
Says in the back?
Yes, it is. State assessment, student growth.
Okay.
And these things here.
One twenty, one twelve.
I'm on my twelve.
And this is related to the curriculum. It shows one thing that really popped out in my page, looks like this, green, yellow, white, and black.
What page?
Something like that. There's no page number on it.
I think it's one twenty-two.
And Ms. Broo and I, and Ms. Jensen and the superintendent spoke about this in length yesterday.
Mean score.
That's one right there.
So one twenty-two is over in there.
Right. And the superintendent probably helped on this a little bit. But we talked about what was going on at Seminole, the middle school and the high school. And one of the positive aspects I seen on here was the proficiency of math, that baseline and actual, and where the state wants us to be at, at 24, 25. But what has been shown here is our proficiency in math at Seminole is 61.78. And if you look at this chart, it's probably a little confusing to understand. I had them break it down for me yesterday. Look at the baseline and actual. And superintendent, you can help me out on this. Baseline, is that not the-
What the state is-
What the state expects us to be at.
Right.
Actual, baseline is 37.55, and we are currently at 61.78. And if you look at that, it's shaded in green because we have met the state goal for-
Sixteen seventeen.
Sixteen seventeen and seventeen, sixteen seventeen, which surpassed a growth rate of 44.86. Bottom line, instead of speaking numbers, is Seminole put together a program where math was progressed to the point where it bypassed the state baseline. Either baseline is 37.55 or it's a 61.78. So you're doing something right over there, and that's the bottom line I want to put out. You're doing something right. In the same token, we talked to Ms. Jensen. They trying to put something together, or they are putting something together to bring up to the middle school and the high school level also. So on curriculum, Seminole's doing good. Middle school, we got still a lot of work to do. Me and Ms. Broo talked about it. They got a lot of work still left to do. But they are putting some programs that's working, and Seminole is being a model of showing what's going on. Now, you do see on here that proficiency in language arts is 48.19. The baseline for the state is 49.14. They know the shortcomings, they working on that, and they institute a new program or a new phase of the program this year to help with the curriculum in Seminole, which is going up pretty good, and they're very proud of that. That's what's happening with that. This chart is very complicated. If you guys have any questions- If you guys have any questions, shoot out there now because the superintendent's here, she can probably explain some of this stuff to you. I'll help you out the best I can, but Ms. Jensen is the expert, I'm just the person to see what's going on. Also, you got any questions?
So if I'm looking at this chart, you saying the baseline is, baseline, if I'm understanding what you're saying, baseline is the state average across the state?
What, yes, what they expect.
Okay, that's baseline, that's state average. Actual is where we're at, at the end of two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen.
Correct.
So this information is always from a previous year, if I'm reading this correctly. And also give you seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, so...
Seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, those numbers there are what we're looking at, projected growth.
Okay, so those are projected numbers.
Right, so you go down the line where it said to meet goal of a hundred percent?
Right.
Because our goal is always to be at a hundred percent.
Well, yeah, of course.
We're gonna shoot for the moon.
Right.
So that's going to be a four point seven-eight increase. So if you look at sixty-one point seven-six and you go up four point seven-eight, that's how you get that sixty-six point five-six.
Right.
And each year is the same increments, four point seven-eight to get to a hundred percent. That's where we, that's what we're looking at.
Now, let me ask, is this K through five, or is this K through three, or this four and five? This is whole, I mean, these numbers represent K through five in Seminole?
The ones that are tested are three through five.
Okay, that's what I was saying, okay, so this is three through five. It's not K through five, it's three through five.
Right, because the little ones aren't using this.
Three through five, okay, that was one of my questions, okay.
And at our workshop, we'll go into, in the next workshop, we'll go in in a little more detail. And with that, with the personnel, we also, as we talked about at the, I think the board meeting before, that Mrs. Jensen will be our full-time curriculum director for next year, so we're making a couple of changes in that. And then Ms. McCormick will be the principal over at the, at Seminole. So we want to make sure that our curriculum is revamped across the board. And so we do need a curriculum person to help with that. She, instead of doing it part-time, she'll do it full-time.
And Mr. Superintendent, since we have the floor, the state assessment student growth.
Yes.
I know we went over it yesterday, can you explain this to my fellow board members for they understand what I'm describing?
Okay. Find my sheet real quick.
This is the, this is the one we're looking at.
Yes, for next year, and Mary knows about this one too.
One-eighteen.
What happens with this, right now, student growth is part of teacher evaluation. And from fifteen FY fiscal year, twenty fifteen, sixteen through this current year that just passed, twenty seventeen, eighteen, it was only twenty-five percent of their evaluation, their whole evaluation. And starting next year, it will be forty percent of their total evaluation. And so student will be using twenty percent student growth for whatever measures we decide. And then the other percentage, twenty percent of that forty, will be coming from the state testing, state growth. And the teachers or grade levels that do not administer state testing will be finding different tools to use to measure theirs. But just wanted to let you know that the percentages will be changing from twenty eighteen into the twenty nineteen school year, and that's a state requirement.
Any questions on that? So in future, I just want the rest of the board to be expecting not only my agenda or the agenda, whoever is the chairperson of this curriculum, of this committee, we will have the agenda as well as the committee notes that's along with, with this whole process. So you see everything black and white, totally transparent. Now, today, you didn't get it because you just had a meeting yesterday. So you got it today before the meeting. But hopefully, we'll have a meeting, you know, enough time for you get it before you get the packet. Those are my comments, any other questions for me? Mr. Brooley, I miss anything?
Any questions, comments to Mr. Dr. McFadden? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Patrick, Munich Coalition.
We did have a short meeting last, last month. We started meeting at one o'clock during the summer months, so we were not as heavily attended as we were during the school year, but we are ramping up our, excuse me, projects for the upcoming school year. Drug Take Back Day, Career Fair, and of course, Real Talk, we'll be doing two of those in the upcoming school year. Mr. Bunton indicated he's going to be stepping down as the chairperson, he's not going to be walking away from the coalition, but he stepped down as chairman, so we will be looking for some new leadership in our coalition. So if anyone's interested, we'll meet next Wednesday, next week, right here at one o'clock. So we're definitely looking for some more, more volunteers to help us out, and if I'll take any questions that you may have at this time.
You said Wednesday, right?
Wednesday at one o'clock.
Any questions, Mr. Linnenberg? Thank you, Mr. Linnenberg. Legislative, I have no report. Dr. McFadden, Athletic Ad-Hoc Committee.
There has not been athletic ad hoc meeting, we just talked a little bit about athletics at the curriculum personnel meeting yesterday. Basically, just asked about structure, job descriptions, more of a flowchart situation with our current coaches, a yearly planning schedule, basically, you know, how the season's going to play out, how it's going to look, year in advance type of advance quarterly, those type of plans right there. We will probably have an athletic ad hoc committee meeting in the future when there's something pertinent or special that comes up the pipeline. Right now, there's nothing there.
Any questions? Did I, driving up, did I not see on the marquee of advertisement for volleyball in August and football game in August?
It was posted, yes, it was.
I did see that.
It went so quickly.
The sign is great, but you only have about four seconds to get it.
So basically, what you see, we will have football and volleyball this.
Perfect, perfect. And I think I saw some of the football players practicing.
Yes, they're doing conditioning.
Yeah, they're not, not legally practicing yet.
Practicing, they just getting together and bonding.
Something like seven, seven, you know, you're going to work with seven at a time or something like that. Any additional questions? Educational Foundation, we have not had a meeting. I saw Mr. Schichtel on Tuesday, yesterday, and asking for some kind of report from what they gave out at the last graduation, and he was supposed to get that to me, but it has yet to come to me. When he sends it to me, I will send it out to the board members so you can see what students applied for the local scholarship and what students were awarded and how much they were awarded. Item fifteen, board comments. Ms. Escalante.
You always start with me.
Ladies first. That's how I was raised.
Well, thank you. Yeah, evidently. You can't tell if he's picking on me or if he just really wants me to go first. Right, exactly. Well, I hope everybody's having a good summer. I've been having a great summer, I want to give a little shout out to my son, who's here again, Max, and then my in-laws are here visiting from Venezuela all the way here in Mount Clemens. They came to surprise my husband for his fortieth birthday, so it's been nice to have them in the house and I'm getting a break from the kids. So that's the best part about having in-laws staying. I'm looking forward to the school year. I know that there's a lot of things that are up in the air right now, and I know there's a lot of uncertainties, but I think all of us as a board are on the same page when I say that, including with the superintendent, that none of us want to see layoffs and, you know, we want, we want the numbers so that our teachers have security in their jobs and our students can learn from these amazing men and women that come every day to teach them and to care for them, really. I think more beyond teaching, they, they care for our kids, they love our children. So I'll definitely be saying lots of extra prayers for this coming school year. So get your kids into our district, this is a good district, I promise you, all three of mine are here. I would not send my kids here if it wasn't. So those are my comments. Have a safe summer and eat a lot of ice cream. Oh, wait, I do have one more thing. Can, can, can I pass a motion that we can't let Terry or Josie go, or is that totally illegal? Josie, I'm going to miss you. You're one of the first people I met when I came on as a rookie, and you always made me feel really welcome, so you're going to be missed. Thank you for everything you did. And those are my comments. Once a bather, always a bather.
I thought you was going to put a motion.
I don't even know. I would probably sue.
Thank you. Mr. Voorhees.
I, I too hope and pray that our attendance will be up so that we don't have to lay off any of our dedicated personnel. I think that the more numbers we have, the, the more teachers we have, the more programs we can have, and the better that this, this, we've got a great system, but we just need to make it better. So enough said on that. The other is, being a dog lover, I, I noticed on Facebook that someone has inherited a new dog, Bruno, Bruno Monk, I believe, has arrived. I looked at those paws, you got a big job coming.
He's supposed to get about eighty pounds.
Yeah.
He's going to be a big boy. Thank you.
But, yeah, you bet. But, and I also want to compliment Ms. Escalante on having her son here again. I said to him, I said, well, one day you'll sit at this table with your mother, I said, or maybe you'll be governor, and he said, I think I'll be president, so you'll be the first mom.
Oh, boy.
I know, don't you lie. Anyway, with that, once a bather, always a bather.
Thank you, Mr. Voorhees. Mr. Monk.
Thank you, Mr. President. First and foremost, I would like to send my condolences to you and your family.
Thank you, sir.
It's never, you know, death is never easy, you, you don't know when it's going to happen, but the Bible says that to be absent from the body is to be present with the Lord. And hopefully, you and your family can take comfort in that, and I wish, and I pray that the Lord keeps his hand on you and your family through this time of transition of your sister. To, I've heard about the parents of Ms. Escalante, her husband, husband fans, right?
Yeah.
I heard you can cook, so I'll be over. I want some Venezuelan cooking.
Yeah.
Yes, 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 so.
Absolutely.
And Santino, it's good to see you, looking dapper over there, you look like you're going to be president. Again, I wish, you know, all of our students a, a, a safe, a safe rest of the summer. Make it back, get yourselves ready to dive into the books and be educated by our fine, our fine staff here at Mount Clemens Community Schools. I want to thank my board members for being patient with me. I can, I can be some of a pain in the butt, but charge it to my, my heart and not to my head. You know, I'm just, I'm just want the best and I know everybody else here wants the best. And Josie, we got some history. Josie came here when I was coaching, and Josie was my ace in the hole for everything. I went to Josie for, you know, I, when your son was born, me and Josie got some history. I used to call her all the time, Miss Monk, no, Miss Monk, yeah, Miss Monk, no, you don't have that, no, yeah, yeah. So a lot of my decisions was made coaching volleyball, basketball, football, was, was, was made pertaining to what you told me I can and cannot do. So you know what, I'm, we're family, you know what I'm saying? And, and, you know, I expressed this when I came and visited you the other day. You know, we will, we hate to see you leave, we hate to see any of our good people leave, but we understand why you're leaving. You know, you have to do what's best for you and your family, and that's, that's, that's the most important thing.
Yes.
I know you have a, you know, a place in Mount Clemens in your heart, you know, you're going to be, you know, once a bather, always a bather, although you didn't graduate from here. But I want to wish you, your husband, and your kids, and everybody, a, 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 a good luck, a rah-rah, makes, you know, I pray that everything, you know, falls in, and I know it will, because you're such a good person, you're such, you have such a warm heart. And me personally, I'm going to miss you, you know what I'm saying? Just coming by and seeing that smile that you're doing right now, it's always a warm smile. You know, you've, out of our nine and a half years, you know, I saw that on a, when you said nine and a half years, I'm sorry, I mean to make you cry. I've never seen you get upset, not one time. So that's me personally, I, that's me.
You should have seen her after she hung up the phone.
Right, yeah. So wish you well, we love you, and we'll, we'll see you when we see you. All right, tell your husband and everybody we said thank you for sharing, thanks. And those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Mr. Brooley?
I would like to associate comments with you regarding Josie, appreciate it very much. I would also like to make sure before we get out of here, we get a workshop date for after the twenty-fourth to talk about the attendance policy and try to get that settled before school starts, short cuts, thank you.
Since when you're on that, you want to do it, and you want to try to do it in July, or you want to do, well, first of all...
We'll do all the comments and then maybe, then, but just that we take, tackle it before we leave.
No problem. Dr. McFadden?
Condolences to you and your family.
Thank you, sir.
I got whatever you need, I'm there for you. Best wishes to Josie and Terry, I want to say thank you. Also want to say that summer school has been, not summer school, but the summer program's been very successful. I want to thank Ms. Campbell, thank you very much, because it's been very organized and very structured and very informed, and you're never in, never in a dark, and I really appreciate that. I mean, she is really on top of everything, so I want to appreciate your whole staff, everybody doing over there. Ms. Terry McCoy put together a program in an afternoon that's amazing, and I want to say thank you for that because it's, it's, it's a team effort. And that's what, that's what we're going for this year, is not just everybody getting together doing what they want to do, we got structure. And we talked to the superintendent yesterday, myself and Mr. Brooley, and we, and she's making structure and making for everybody know what they're doing. So there's no ifs, ands, and I don't know what happened. So we know what's going on, there's going to be some control around here, and it's going to be what we need done. Other than that, I'm looking forward to the date that we're going to put together for this workshop, before we get this discussion done and over with and get this thing going before the school year starts. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Dr. McFadden. Thank you to the board for your well wishes and condolences on the homegoing of my elder sister. We had her services yesterday, oh, no, excuse me, today is what, Monday, we had her services. She had colon cancer and had complications from surgeries that she had and could not overcome those complications. Thank you for your thoughts and prayers. Mr. Linnenberg, I see a alumnus behind the camera today, the valedictorian, you know. I thought when kids graduated, they'd leave this place and get out of here and don't want to see it anymore, but she doesn't want to leave. That's the senior class valedictorian, she came back to operate the cameras for us. Thank you very much. You still, once a bather, always a bather. Here we are in mid-July, and I've got my colleagues telling the kids to get ready to come back. I'm not going, having, telling the students to get ready to come back, I'm not going to do that this month. Enjoy it, it's July, you know, September is a million miles away, this month.
To them, yes.
But by all means, I continue to enjoy your summer, what's left of it. I hope the, the weather doesn't run away like it could do, that I hope people are enjoying themselves and recharging and refueling themselves just to be ready to tackle it hard beginning in September. I would like to announce that there are three board seats up for election in November. The filing deadline for those seats is July the twenty-fourth, twenty-eighteen. The filing deadline for those seats is July the twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen, at, by four P.M. You file by going to the county clerk's office and picking up petitions, or you can pay a fee, uh, to be put on the ballot. But there are three seats that will be up for election, uh, in November. And the deadline for, uh, filing for those three seats is July the twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen, at four P.M. Uh, we heard, uh, earlier in the discussion about the layoffs, pending layoffs and potential layoffs, and no one on this body, uh, wants to have any layoffs. But in, when we do, there's a process and procedure by which that we have to follow, uh, by the union contract, and we have to conform to, to our budget. So, we do all these things, not as a punitive measure, uh, but as a measure to put ourselves in a position that we're, we're not experiencing any additional, um, salaries or any additional expenditures because we didn't follow the process. And, and that, that's why, uh, we're doing it, uh, in the manner that we're doing it. So, just in case, um, we'll, we'll be in a, in a good, in a, in a position to be able to do so in order to open school, uh, come September. As I talked about there, we have a schedule, uh, for our fall sports. And it looks like we're going to have varsity, uh, girls volleyball and boys football, uh, for the fall. It's good to hear. We'll see these young people begin to practice, uh, more intensely as the, the official practice date comes due by the state. And so, we, uh, wish our young people well. They will, they will again be, uh, participating in, uh, fall athletics.
Will the voice of the bathers be there?
He will be there.
Good.
Yeah, he will be there. He's warming up.
That's right.
He's warming it up. And to, um, to the staff, um, enjoy, enjoy the rest of your time off. You worked hard all year. We appreciate, uh, your efforts, even though some of the decisions that we have to make, it may not seem as though we appreciate your efforts, but, uh, we really do. But we make decisions based on the, on our, on our ability and what we have to do. To Josie, you'll be sorely missed. I know when I run in and out of the office from signing, you know, like Mr. Monk said, you know, greet you with a smile, good afternoon, good morning, how you doing, Mr. Rickman, whatever the case of the day is. And, and I appreciate that. And that's not even talking about the work that you did and the quality of work, uh, that's been testified by the superintendent and, and fellow, my fellow colleagues. So, we wish you all the luck and success in your new endeavors, uh, for you and your family. And like Mr. Monk said, you know, hey, what, you have to do what's best for your family. And we, we're part of your family, but we, we understand, uh, you know, why you're doing the things that you're doing. The same thing, uh, Ms. McCoy, Mrs. McCoy, um, like, um, Superintendent Davis said, she, we thought she, we brought her in for a ten-month, um, experience, um, and she did such an excellent job, relating to our community and our parents and our students, um, that there was an extension and some other opportunities that came about for her here in the Mount Clemens Community School District. And we were able to, uh, maintain her services. Now, she has an opportunity to do something that she's always wanted to do, um, and is coming to fruition. And we, we wish her well and much success, uh, in her future endeavors. And, uh, if she will, wants to come back to help us out on some things, we'll be more than happy to have her come help us out, uh, on some, some projects and some programs. Those are my comments, um, which, based on Mr. Brewley, uh, we can, the board, uh, pull out their calendars and see if we can establish a date, uh, to hold a board workshop, uh, after the twenty-fourth of July is the date. Mr. Brewley.
To be a little bit selfish, I would pick the twenty-fifth. Twenty-five.
Twenty-five is, uh, is a Thursday, no, it's Wednesday. It's next Wednesday, isn't it?
Yeah, so it's like with the, the internal committee's the twenty-fourth, and so, it's a Wednesday, it's usual school night and...
You can, um, want to put it in form of a motion?
I would move that we'll meet on the twenty-fifth for a workshop. Six-thirty, good, or...
Jason, what about your work?
I'm fine, just, you know, early the better. Again, you know, it's, uh, I'm good all the way up to about eight fifteen, then I...
Six-thirty is great.
Six-thirty?
It's been moved by Mr. Brewley to establish July twenty-fifth, um, at six-thirty P.M. for a board workshop here in administrative, uh, off work, work area.
Support.
Seconded by Dr. McFadden. Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? And the motion is to establish, uh, September, ah, September, July the twenty-fifth, six-thirty P.M. right here in this workspace, uh, for a board workshop.
Do we need to have a topic for the workshop, or just say workshop?
This board workshop.
Okay.
Any additional questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call roll, please.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Those are my comments. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Moved by Dr. McFadden.
Support.
Seconded by Mr. Monk. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor to adjourn? Hearing and seeing none, call a roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Means adjourned at seven fifty in the P.M. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.